Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 20th meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission. We begin tonight with the roll call. Commissioner Slay will be joining us a few minutes later tonight.
Commissioner Ho.
President.
Mr. Hakenin.
President.
Mr. Johnson.
Sir.
Mr. Hopkins.
Sir. All right, under approval of minutes, we have a couple on here, the July 12th, which did not, as far as I can find, get posted to the city website. So I'm thinking we probably want to defer that to next month, so there's a chance for public to comment should they want to. But that leaves us the August 16th minutes. And then I also had a question about an April minutes. We did not have a forum to move on those last meetings, so can we move on those now because they weren't?
I was so focused on, I gotta get the July 12th minutes on there.
All right.
Missed the April, and it looks like you can't vote on either of them without Chris.
But I believe August. No, we won't do it. You're right. It was just Richard, Chris, and myself, so perhaps we can come back to that later in the evening or about it for next month.
Either way.
Either way, all right, we'll table that one for now. Let me help you remember to come back to that, please, because I've already forgotten. Approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any changes they would like to see to tonight's agenda? All right. Now moving on to items from the floor. Item not appearing on the agenda. Welcome to comment now, anybody from the public. Person or online, I believe so. All right, I know items from the floor. That moves us on to our regular agenda items, beginning with item number one. Trevor.
Right, so this is your monthly update on the Axalum Grand and Parker Creek Trail closures. As you know, you approve temporary closure, six-month closures to protect sensitive resources and do some erosion control down on the beach, and the base of the Parker Creek Trail was repaired in May and reopened. Axalum Grange Trail remains closed pending some repairs to the base of the trail, potentially rerouting. The GHD report that they were working on for rerouting the trail has been completed and provided to the Coastal Society. They have not yet provided a copy to the city. They were going to meet as forward first or sending that out. And then the fencing on the beach needs to be removed before the end of the month. There's some storms coming, so should sooner. I know Eli told Public Works to go ahead and do that, so I imagine it's. Yeah, okay, so it started today. And then this says, on a related note, some of you may remember way back when to the temporary closure of the Van Wick Trail, so that that has been slumping for some time. And so the city did look for some grant funding to do some repairs and got some grant funding, but it was a large repair with a big retaining wall and bigger trail, and so that that was. There were a number of issues with that, and so the city ended up not moving forward with that repair. And the planning commission authorized a six-month closure of the trail to look at repair options. Basically, why we closed it was the insurance company said that it's not insurable. And the reason Van Wick is different than some of the other trails is because of the failing little retaining wall that was there, and that's failing, and there's boards sticking out nails and. So when, there are some limits on liability for cities for trails, but in the case where there's improvements failing like that, it's hard to defend. The insurance company was the one who sort of precipitated the closure. You know, between COVID and other things, you know, we didn't make a lot of progress on looking for options, kind of got dropped by the wayside a little bit. Okay, it had been appealed. Trail technically should have remained open during the appeal. And the Coastal Commission heard it at their September meeting. They found no substantial issue, but only because it was a six-month closure, and they made it very clear that on that trail reopened, also six months, so we met the Coastal Commission staff. We have a meeting in the management team yesterday, and although that wasn't particularly on the agenda. So it's super complicated, it's a super complicated issue, but we're looking at. Back before you and something, so that's my report and take.
A question. What happens at the end of the six months and the trails are opened?
Good question.
Which which trail are you referring?
I'm sorry, Van Wick.
Good question.
Ask it the ball.
Yeah. I'm not sure at this point. You know, there would be an option to extend that or to bring that to the planning commission for an extension. I'm sure it would be appealed.
As if the trail already been closed for well over six months, though.
It's been closed for like four years. Yeah, so so technically, the appeal and the Coastal Commission taking the appeal stayed the city's action, so it should have been reopened, but because we were trying to figure out, you know, you know, again, we have the complications of the insurance. And the city, it's not an insurance company, it's an insurance co-op of cities. So all the cities pay into that, and so Trinidad gets sued, all the city, the other cities have to to support that. And then, but the the York Tribe and the TAS want the trail closed. So and then it's it's moving, you know, obviously, it's moving. So a lot of complicated issues, I imagine we are not going to have it fixed in six months, so we'll have to figure out what that accepts me.
I think I've heard a number of times here by people in the community and confirming that insurance, that city does, there's trails everywhere, the city doesn't have liability.
Oh, they do, and and defending liability even so someone can sue whether you have liability or not, and then you have to defend it. So, for example, there was recently, they signed a case where recently they had to pay half a million dollars to defend a liability. They won, but it still comes down. And because of the failing retaining wall, that the court, there's been some recent court decisions that say if there are improvements like that that have failed, then we do them. So it's nuanced.
And so the six months begins tolling now.
Starting with the Coastal Commission decision, yeah.
When does exactly does the six-month period on Axalum Grand Trail expire?
I forget the exact date, but like mid-November, I think it was, I don't really remember. Imagine we're, I mean, and the steps were taken out, right?
Yeah, the cable log steps are gone, and there's the jet padding down at the base.
Yeah, so I imagine we're gonna have to ask for an extension. Eli really wants to have it open by next Memorial Day, but you have to figure out, you know.
When, do we know the schedule for the TAS board for their next meeting when they're going to see this? I guess the next time you meet with them and just from my perspective, communicate to them, we're hopeful to see a copy of this.
Yes, Eli has requested a couple of times.
City property, you know.
And I mean, it's a grant, it's a private, you know, it's a private grant, sometimes grant deliverables are public, so I don't know if we could get it that way. It's a private grant to a private entity, so I don't.
I doubt seriously that we could get a copy.
And the irony is, they've, there's been a big fight to keep that trail open long ago when the original, when that lighthouse was built. And so everybody wants this trail to be open, and I think they've tried to do it in a good way. And but just, this is like, you know, there was a huge fight, because at that time, it was, it was I heard it was going to be closed at one time, and so they're, they tried, they checked it open, and it's going to be open some.
On the agenda item one, the update on the trail. Any, anything else from the commission? Chris, do you have any specific to that one?
Just taking a copy of the report.
We don't have one yet. We're asking for one. Any public comment on item? In the room rushing to the microphone. All right, we'll bring it back to the commission. Anything else? Nothing else required from us, right, Trevor? On that one?
No, no action.
All right, agenda item number two.
Let's see, so this one is an extension request for the Rancharia's interpretive center. So this is, it was approved in August 2021. The Rancharia extension requested an extension prior to expiration of that approval. Basically, the planning commission included a condition of legal for a two-year approval. There's been a number of delays, one of which was figuring out the lot line adjustment and how to deal with the window street right of way. That was going to be decent, so you guys approved that lot line adjustment earlier this year. We, I believe the Rancharia submitted their CDP application today for that, so they've been working with the Coastal Commission on getting all that material together. So I believe that there is good cause for the delays. They're also, Rancharia is working on some other projects that and the conditions haven't substantially changed, so staff recommendations is to go ahead and extend the approval.
Thanks, Trevor. Any questions from the commission for Trevor?
Just to clarify, the only thing in front of us tonight is the extension itself. There's no other aspects of the original project that we.
There's a couple of representatives from the Rancharia, so you could certainly ask questions. An amendment to the project would require a different action and could affect their CDP submitting as well.
With that, it looks like the Rancharia might be present. I don't know if they had any input, anything they wanted to offer tonight? The applicant?
Good afternoon or good evening. This is Leslie Sanders. I'm the Transportation and Land Use Director for the Rancharia. And the interpretative center is one of the projects that I am overseeing. We also have James Brown, who is a tribal council representative here. He's also on Zoom if you have any questions for him. But the Rancharia, we have been working diligently on ensuring that the, all of the conditions to the lot line adjustment as well as this permit are carried out carefully. As Trevor mentioned, the CDP permit did get submitted today. It is actually, they allowed us to combine the lot line adjustment as well as the construction of the project. We did submit all the documentation to the title company in June following the notice to proceed on the lot line adjustment with the stipulations that we would bring all the documentation back to the planning commission. On Wednesday, we just received the preliminary title reports from the title company, and we know this is a very, very complex project. The line adjustment itself is very complex, so we are working diligently. We have not let up on this, and that's why we would ask for the extension.
All right, thank you very much, Leslie. Any questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
Leslie, thanks for the information. I asked this question because we've seen recent projects modified significantly due to, you know, scattering costs, skyrocketing costs of construction. So I'm asking, you know, since this was approved quite a while ago, whether the increased cost of construction materials has in any way affected the design or any other aspects of this project, or whether it's just going to go forward as it's always been planned.
So obviously, yes, the increased costs are affecting the project or affecting the Rancharia. However, with that said, we are not changing any of the design, we are not changing any of that. In fact, we did put the project out to bid just to try and get an estimate, and yes, costs have come in. Probably, I want to say, at least 500,000 that would have been if we would have been able to move forward with this project two years ago. But we had COVID. We have all the complexities of the project. We are well aware that that are the consequences of them. So no, we have not modified the project. We are not changing the design. All of the documents that went to the Coastal Commission were the same documents that we had submitted previously. We did have to update the building codes and some of that. But the actual design has not been changed or modified.
Right, thank you for the information. Sorry to hear about the stream and resources, but I appreciate it.
It was quite a shock, but it is something that we will move, we will figure it out.
Great. Any other commissioner questions for the applicant? All right, this time I'll open it up to public comment if there's any members of the public with questions about this project. Seeing and hearing now, I'll bring it back to the commission. Anybody else have any questions or comments or thoughts? It's an entertaining emotion.
Based on the information submitted in the application included in the staff report and public testimony, I move to adopt the information and findings in this staff report and approve the design review and grading permit for the Trinidad Rancharia Interpretive Center Building as submitted and conditioned therein.
Trying to type in a question, I think it might have been the 2021, the August.
Did I read the wrong one?
Yeah, the August one instead of the.
Thank you. Let me modify my motion then. Based on the fact that conditions have not substantially changed and the fact that the Rancharia is continuing to actively actively pursue all the necessary permits and funding, I move to extend the approval for a grading permit and design review for the Trinidad Rancharia Interpretive Center Building for the two years as conditioned in the original approval. Thank you very much.
All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you, Leslie. Thank you, James.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I do just ask, keep us appraised if we didn't encounter any more delays, kind of like with the storm, the thing that we extended in October, I think it was, just, is there anything we can do to help you guys out? Let us know.
Perfect, and as soon as we get more information on the lot line adjustment, we will be back to provide you additional information on that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, this is James. How's it going, everybody? On tribal council there at Trinidad Rancharia, I just would like to thank you for your consideration today. And again, we always want to stay in good contact and communication with our neighbors and be good stewards towards our neighbors. So, you know, again, moving forward, if anybody has any other questions, you know, feel free to reach out. I feel like we, there's an open door for us as neighbors to have that communication, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, moving on to agenda item number three.
Right, so this is a fairly small project consisting of a small addition to a deck and some stairs and a new viewing platform off the existing decks. This is a project, another project you saw a couple of years ago where there was a large remodel. A little bit of changes to the footprint actually reduced the size of the footprint, although it increased the square footage of the house and added some additional decking. And then the stairs and the platform were constructed as part of that, but without, that wasn't part of the 2021 approval. So they were informed that permits would be required, and so this is an after, after the practice development permit for that because of the size of the decks and unstable area and a couple of other things. Requires course development permit and designer view to exchange, changing the external profile of the structure. It's not changing the building itself, though, so does not affect height, square footage, things like that. And the property, where the project is located, is a suburban residential. Property does have some special environment zoning in the narrow, the narrow strip that leads down to the coast. The project require, meets all the required setbacks, a 13 and a half foot setback from the rears or west property line, and that is allowable by the zoning ordinance. Minimal grading was required, the support for the piling is working and dug. And it's got minimal potential to block views to the location. Because the property has SE zoning, I provided the regulations for the SE zoning, but they do not apply to this project because it's not affecting vegetation, it's not near a bluff stream, but it is in an area that's designated as being questionably stable. So I did ask for a geologist to to take a look. There was a geologic engineering assessment that was completed for the project. It is fairly brief, but there was a more detailed one completed for the previous project. And one of the questions we had for that was, was this on a bluff? Face, which it's not, it's not in an area that's, you know, subject to a lot of erosion. The deck is well-built and is not going to contribute to any instability. However, we are aware that it is an exposed rock face with a driveway below it, parking area, and a few years ago, it jumped, broke off, crushed. So I did include a couple of conditions related to, you know, holding the city harmless and indemnifying the city against any damages that might occur that could be attributed to to the deck. And that should have become unstable or compromised from law calls that it would have to be. So those are having conditions on the project. Not affecting the the subject system or landscaping. Designer view findings are written in a manner to allow approval, but as usual, we should consider those findings and whether they need to be reworded if the total presents additional information, for example. Staff recommendation at this point is for approval with the conditions. Oh, and just to note, condition six requires that they submit an application to transfer the ETS permit, you know, housing, since the staff approach. Is it happy to answer any questions?
All right, I'll go up to the commissioners.
Yeah, I had a question. Here for you, Trevor, was stated, decks over 30 inches high or greater than 500 square feet in this local industry are not exempt. But is this deck over 30 inches high or any of those things? I mean, you can see it from that, it's just, yeah, adverse street.
Yeah, I mean, it's so that it changes, there's a lot of deck already. So when you add it to the existing deck in the existing project and with the footings in the unstable area and on the rock face and it is visible from the street technically.
Gotcha, yeah.
I mean, I don't know exactly how high it is by itself. It's not 500 square feet, but those are those are the exemptions for coastal development permits. And we generally, you know, for example, there's a, there's an exemption for 500 square foot accessory structure listed. But we only allow that once, like you got, you don't get multiple ones of those, so since the decking is already 500 square feet.
Even though the decking is presumed to require some other.
Yes, you know, again, I think it's an additive because that's how we interpret it, regulations. Yes, you know, again, I think it's an additive, um, because that's how we interpreted regulations. Good question. And it's pretty.
I mean, it's pretty tall.
Vegetated, can you?
I mean, I did pull it up on Google Earth, the parcel, just looking at it, and it, it, I think what I'm seeing is just a little, almost like. Sun deck kind of eating platform in this small clearing in the trees here. I mean, at least from the overhead view, I don't know what it is from ground level.
It's most visible from Old Dome Beach. That's, I mean, that's where I posted.
The platform.
It's pretty far there, but in town. From the head, it's like so far away that you don't notice it in this, like, looking for it.
Questions?
Just for clarification, um, under site characteristics. Uh, the second sentence there in that paragraph said the site borders the city limits in the Trinidad Ranch area to the east. Uh. This, just, just to clarify, this parcel is within the city limits.
It is, so, but the, that, um. That eastern property line is the city limits.
Eastern property. Is the city limits. The eastern, yes, okay, yes, of course. Right, because one seventy is the last parcel before the, uh, uh, that's within the city limits on that side of scene, right? And, uh, not that it matters, but it is relatively easy to see that platform from, uh, scene. Which of course is not necessarily a specific U, but they probably. So at this point, um. Trevor, I, I went back and looked at the original, um. Well, I shouldn't say the original, the last time that this project came before us, and there were at that point, uh, some, um. Looked like there were still some open issues with unpermitted. Uh, development, and I don't know, did we sweep all of that into the last time we did this?
I believe so, because there was. Think some decks that had been constructed, the remodeling had started without construction, and there was the, like, a sunroom or a. Woodshed that we didn't have permits for, um, that was removed as part of that project. Um, so yes, I believe we. Took care of it.
So with that in mind, then, everything that is in that original report. Should have a permit associated with it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I went back and reviewed the, the tape from this meeting, um, and you made a comment, Trevor, that a lot of the. Previous permits were filed by year, not by property, so their, our records weren't as a city. You know.
Well, some of it's in a moldy storage shed too.
So your, your point, though, I think, was that I wanted to just. Read it was that because we don't know doesn't mean there wasn't, when there could have been.
There could, yes, I think that's what I was trying to say is the woodshed, we didn't have a file for it. That doesn't mean it didn't get a permit. Um, but we wrapped it into that. And it, and it was.
Yeah, uh, you know, there's, there's been improvements that have made, been made since nineteen ninety-two. And, um, so I'm just, I just want to make sure that. We've covered everything.
As far as I know.
Okay, all right.
There's questions for Trevor at this point. I believe we have a. For the applicant here, anything you'd like to add, or can we ask you some questions? If you, would you mind setting the microphone just otherwise the audio won't get captured? Thank you.
Well, the, uh, what the ETS from the owners, uh, just filed that, the inspection been done by us.
Just for the record, your name, sir?
Andrew.
Oh, okay. I saw your name on there. And you're the owner's agent, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess I have a question, I guess, for either you or Trevor. When I was going back and, and looking at the. The drawings here that were submitted, C one point one of this packet versus the old packet. And, and this is minor, but it appears that there's a, I guess maybe it's not minor. If you look at the original one, there's a large. Projection of the deck. It was filled in, it was not shown on the original application that is on this one, and it's showing as existing grade out deck on what you said tonight. I was just curious if you can speak to that difference.
I was pointing until then that.
So it looks like it, it projects right off the corner of the building there. Um, it looked to be like kind of almost a return in, and now that was on the original document back from twenty twenty one, I think that we got. Um, for that original act of fact permit on this one now. That's been squared off, and then in addition to that, there's the stairwell down and then coming across. And so it looks like. A big section of deck was added somewhere that's not captured in either one. It's, it's just like it's represented here as existing. Absolutely, please, yeah. So this is, this is the document from last time I referred to that section right there between those two points. And right here, it looks like it's been filled in and is being represented as existing, but it was not. Part of the proposed decking in the, the project that we saw before. So I understand where that section right there was.
So this. Is, uh, that's not very accurate, right? That's always been, um. Can walk through here.
So this is probably. So those two corners that was squared off before?
Yes.
This is, so you're, okay.
Yeah, and, and so this is the original, right? So the part that was added on. In the, uh, in the last one, was this portion right here, but this should have been gray coming out.
So that piece there was there, okay.
Yeah, because you've always been able to walk.
Around the corner of the building. Okay, that makes sense. And then. Okay, that's the biggest thing that jumped out at me on that.
That's a good, very observant, yes.
Little detail.
Anyone needed to inspect that, you could see, you'd be able to look underneath and see.
No, that makes sense that you'd have the ability to.
Be able to walk to it.
Walk around, although that new deck wasn't there before that was added in, right? So there wasn't nowhere to walk around to before.
Just stairs going down.
Got you, okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
So you're the owner's representative. Did, could you help us understand why a permit wasn't pulled and. Double the cost doesn't stop someone doing something. What would get the owner's attention to pull a permit next time instead of doing it and then getting it out? Does anyone?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Um, first of all, and, uh. The first, uh, pro hit. On this second one, in their defense, it started out as just wanting to build a little pin by. Pad, now there, but if you go down and, and have product or whatever and. You know, that wouldn't have required, that was where it started, and then they, you know, they had grandchildren, so they never worried about. It's protected on that property. They have everything fenced, so the grandchildren can't get to it. Then they started. They wanted handrails around it, and then. Stairs to go down to it, it'd be safe to get down there, and of course you had evidence of. They, they, a poor choice, yeah, I think, um. Yeah, mother, or. As far as the question, what would it take to deter them? I don't know. I think it was a bad judge call on this, uh, this deal and, you know, double the penalty or it hurts, but, um. You know, I think the kind of people that they are, if they had it carried out, they'd. Cut out, think they were willing to get that. Saw how beautiful it was down there on the platform. They just wanted to get it done. They're in their seventies, probably would want to go through the. Four years, thanks, uh. The permit, so they just, you know. And then, for good, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious. We had to, one night, had to ask ourselves, what would be the terms? And we were hoping that double would be a deterrent, but. Triple would be better deterrent, I mean, for the city, they'd make money.
I, I, I think, uh, depending on the size of the project, right, but yeah, um. Quadruple would be, uh, I mean, if you look at the price of these homes around here, I don't think double the penalty is, uh, this is just me speaking. But if you look at what they think, the, um, double the penalty is probably nothing else.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant?
I've got a question that maybe not, uh, sorry, is it? Pickle you. Rightly so, I suppose, most of the attention is focused on the stairs and that, uh, that view platform. Can you speak a little bit about that, uh, that proposed access walkway in guard rail and what it provides access to? Just give us a better sense of why it's. It's.
You're talking about the little strip on the end down there, yeah. So that one there was, uh, mostly, uh. But you're, you're out of them.
Anton, can you do anything about the feedback we're getting?
They check here for a line. So.
You want me to put the mic away a little bit?
I can take the table up so that you can hear it.
Am I loud enough? Sure, okay, is that better? Yes.
Thank you, yeah, feedback is getting better.
I hope you can hear it now. So, um, it, it's just, right now, there's only one, uh, there was only one exit out of that backyard. And so I did give them an, an additional, it's quite a long one. The south side of the property. The front yard, and so if there was any, I mean. But, you know, if there was an exit out. They just. Out of there to the driveway.
And so is accurate that that guardrail was fixed then, or is it the gates?
Uh, right now it's fixed, um, but it, it would, it's. Yeah, I guess.
Any questions? All right, we'll open it up to any public comment, if there is any, real quick, you know. Is anybody else in the room, obviously, anybody online, now's your chance. Seeing any hands raised, we'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any other discussion?
Uh, I just had a question, Trevor, and it's probably in the packet, and I missed it, but, uh, neighbors were noticed within a hundred feet, okay. Like one more thing with that, yeah, sure.
Um, just as far as being able to view it from scene, we were sensitive to that, so we put in a plantar box and planted some. We're planning on putting some other plants in that plantar box that'll grow up to help hide it from. It's. Except for the mission already, everyone will be watching, they should buy, we, we are aware of that, so. Guess what, thanks.
The commissioners.
I just wanted to, to add maybe in response to that, that we recently discussed, uh, the types of connects that should be installed. Most practices need to be special botanical zone, and so if it's time to replace those plants, I'd encourage doing it. The teachings. Effect with vegetation.
Um, and. It says.
Yeah, most of landscapers should be able to give you some recommendations.
It is in a plantar box, it's not. But, yeah, I'll get it.
At least it shouldn't be, there is a list for invasive plants, and it should, you should avoid those, at least.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I had a question about some of these conditions that, um. You, Trevor, um, I guess, condition three. Sort of suggesting additional construction activities, I mean. The project not complete.
I was not, I didn't know, actually, it was full, if it's, is it fully complete? Okay, so then that would know.
So we're going to strike three or leave it in, or what, what do we do?
I mean, I think you can strike it if, if the project's done.
Um, well, the fact that there is still some vegetation that you just referenced, uh, and vegetation is item C. Uh, maybe we leave it in and.
And a building inspector would have to still go and inspect it.
Yeah, okay, okay, I just want to make sure that, fine.
Not including the plants as a condition, and, or not, we haven't included the plants as a condition at this point, so.
Uh, I mean, I think condition number five sort of fell into the same, same bucket. But I think we could leave it. For the same purpose, for the same reason for leaving number three.
Thank you, Trevor, for condition six. I know it's in the process, but I know it was mentioned at the last, this name, of course, the original permit. You, you mentioned it, it was in the staff report, but it was missed, it didn't get transferred, so that's happening now.
Yeah.
It did not make it as a dish to the last one.
Does, uh. Your collective opinion, does condition five also prohibit the reestablishments of that field that was re-watched? Down slope, covering.
Uh, that. You know. So there is an open space easement for that area. I, you know, I'm not sure the exact wording of that open space easement. Um, you know, some level of vegetation maintenance is generally allowed. You know, the, the coastal act, um, requires a permit for major vegetation removal. As we've talked about fairly recently, um, we, there's not a clear definition for what constitutes major vegetation removal. Um, you know, certainly. The closer you get to the bluff and the beach and the coast, um, more coastal act requirements kick in. Um, but it was really just we whacked, so. You don't worry about it too much for this. It should be protected by the open spaces.
Anything else from the commission? Okay, questions?
Um, based on applicable materials, information and findings included in the staff report and based on public testimony. Find that the project implies with the traditional LCP and other applicable. Well, policies and regulations are moved to adopt information and required design review protection and other findings. So.
Six seconds.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Send you. All right, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we've become an item number four. Why would you do that, Trevor? Why would you say something that is so flattering as that?
We have a lot of dialogue.
Oh, my goodness. Absolutely, yeah, thank you very much. You too.
Um. So policies on detached living spaces? Do we, we ready to move on?
Before I forget, I would like to add issue of, um, after the fact, they're planning permits, building permits to a future agenda item. I think Mr. I think it's Sabatini is absolutely correct. It's make cases easier to beg for forgiveness after the fact, when you're talking about a million parcel of land, a couple of thousand bucks is not going to kill it. And if you have to wait, as he said, two, three years, which I think is not correct, but if you have to wait anything and you've got your contract right there and you can do it, why not? And so we've got to figure out a way to prevent that from happening.
When you cut down a tree.
Um, same thing with the tree. Yeah. But, uh, this, this property has been problematic. And this is not the first time that this has happened. So one could argue it's a case, I should say, that, um, why not? I don't know these people, so I can't say, but I mean, certainly it is reflected here. So I'm just saying, I would like to see it as a future agenda item.
Yes, for sure.
Uh, so another policy, uh, that the planning commission has, um, adopted is for detached living spaces. And so that came up at the July meeting and planning commission, uh, approves um, a detached policies for detached living spaces as well as the definition of a kitchen and a wet bar, um, which are related because a detached living space can't have a kitchen and back. So, uh, what the planning commission and, but there were some current concerns at the July meeting about the walkthroughs, uh, by the, by the building inspector and how often that could occur and under what conditions that would occur. Could it be used as harassment, that sort of thing? So, uh, the planning commission expressed a desire to revisit that. Um, so that's what I'm bringing back to you. Um, and I heard provided both the um, policy on detached living spaces, which are basically antithesis of that as a standard listed conditions that um, added for, for all projects where that applies. And, um, I also included the definition of kitchen.
All right. Any questions about the staff report? We start talking about this.
So this was, as I recall, primarily condition number four about the periodic inspection will walk through by the city building inspector. Each one for our notice. It came up during the approval for the D A's project. It's kind of a general, like Trevor said, concern that what is that standard? And, uh, it, it reads fairly arbitrary. I don't know that we've ever had an issue in town with it being used. And I, I for me, the concern, I don't have concern necessarily about the city per se, using it as a form to harass somebody. I would be more concerned potentially about a neighbor. You know, the other direction almost, um, and so I don't know what the right approach is. I did a little bit of research, just kind of looking around at different things. There's not a whole lot about it from that side. It's really, they seem very much complaint driven. Every just kind of that I looked at just online and a very brief survey. Um, and kind of like the complaint is generated and then inspector goes out and then it goes from there. Uh, so maybe some kind of rubric or float chart to determine what would rise to the standard of necessitating it or, you know, could it be triggered by increase in water usage for the property based off historical precedent or septic permits needing pumping or I don't know. There's a couple of things that pop into mind that triggers that we can see. Um, but there also I think needs to be some mechanism to react or seditiously should have been a concern before. So I don't know. I don't.
Yeah. You wouldn't want to set up, you wouldn't want to necessarily set up a possibility for well, the neighbor complains, the inspector goes in, then he's not allowed back for a year. So then they're like, sweet. Not, I mean, not that.
And I, I didn't know if maybe one path forward might be to have more of a appeal or objection process for the, the person like, hey, hang on. Yeah, I, I um, as, as a stop, a way for the, let's say someone calls about my property for me to say, hang on, before this inspection happens, I want to come and talk about what's going on. I'm not saying no. I don't know if that would kind of get to the same thing from a different direction. But those, those are just my thoughts. Sorry. All right. Okay.
Me, a bedroom has requirements by code. And by saying how many bedrooms are in that, on that piece of property? I mean, specifies that's a three bedroom piece of property. Do you think you're going to send them, come somewhere? It's not that. I thought when somewhere in here, where it said it has just the number of bedrooms. Just to me, it says volume right there.
I mean, bedrooms are certainly a part of it. Um, you know, this, in this case, it wasn't a bedroom. Often a detached living space is used as a bedroom. Then they, then the more important factor is that the kitchen though. So that's usually the, the more common situation. Um, but I think with bedrooms is kind of tough because there are some minimum requirements for a bedroom. But once you hit those minimum requirements, anything can be a bedroom. So like, for example, we talked about with the Vanderpool project, that crow's nest. If they were going to use it as a bedroom, they could call it a bedroom. It would, it would meet the requirements of a bedroom. But it's not necessarily a bedroom. Now, I have seen some cities who say, you know, if it could be a bedroom, it's counted as a bedroom. Um, but you know, I think with people's and, and we do have, you know, I mean, that I think it's not a bad consideration in Trinidad because, you know, we have a lot of, you know, I've seen we five hundred square foot, two, two bedroom houses that have an office and a den and a this and a that. Um, and it's not unlikely that someone in the future is going to come in and use those as bedrooms. Um, but the septic system was only sized for two bedrooms. So I can see that. I mean, I, I think it's not. You know, it's not a terrible consideration or, you know, something to think about doing. But on the other hand, it would you know, the septic system requirements are pretty, you know, there's a lot of space required there. And then you have to have a reserve area. So it would really limit, you know, people's ability to have a den or a thing. So now I, you know, it's not a, it's not, um, it's not really easy. It's not a real easy issue. And like we were talking a little bit with the A D U ordinance, um, you know, I have, I have the condition that you couldn't convert it back to your primary living space because I didn't want the loophole of getting through design review just to add on. But how do we regulate just how many uses? That's a, that's a see, um, in terms of this, I mean, maybe it's, um, maybe it's something like if there has been a previous, uh, an inspection in the previous year, then there's certain requirements on a complaint, like maybe put some more, um, bonus on the neighbor or the complainant to provide some evidence.
So, um, yeah, yeah. We spent so much time on this, if you recall, but I think what when you look at, and I'm focused on a standard condition for owner to agree to periodic inspection. First of all, periodic says, you know, there is a finite span of time between each inspection. I don't think that's necessary. Uh, almost all of what I remember of these kinds of inspections have been a result of a complaint.
Yes. The city wouldn't just go.
Right, right. So with that in mind, it would seem to me that, um, if we could say something to the effect that, um, it, uh, an inspection, uh, may not need to occur more than once annually. Or if a complaint is received by the city. And I kind of liked your idea of maybe what we do is we get a plan commission here, the complaint. And it would give the, both the complainant and the the owner an opportunity to discuss what it is that is the complaint and, and can it be resolved as part of a normal planning commission process?
I would, yes, I would suggest that it either be the city manager or.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. I mean, it doesn't have to be. I, I, yeah, you're right.
Then you have costs. Who's going to bear the costs? Um, so I would suggest it either be, you know, before the building inspector, the city manager or zoning administrator.
Yeah, because experiences that we've had in here in Trin- Trinidad have been primarily a neighbor thinks something's going on. And, uh, you know, they're washing clothes in the back and there's not supposed to be a washer and dryer there or there's a soap in there. So I don't know. It seems to me like getting these two parties together. Well, that's why, that's why we put in there no two forty volt, uh, power. So, uh, yeah, I like the idea of getting the, the two parties together to discuss that. And then if necessary, if there has to be an inspection that can be determined at that point.
Just a question. Do we need to allow an opportunity for an anonymous complaint to be heard? There's an argument. I, I can make an argument in favor and against that concept. I think there's honestly a place for both. Particularly in a small town, neighbors and, you know, um, that, you know, I put mom's complaint against you, but then it still gets heard. I don't necessarily have the, you can still come and meet with, you know, Trevor and the building inspector.
Yeah, it could be super immediate.
I don't know. I just.
Yeah, no, no, that's a, a valid point. And maybe Trevor's right. We, if it's necessary, there could be two meetings or whoever is assigned to resolve the complaint. Um, maybe then could determine how they want to handle an anonymous complaint. I don't think we've ever had an anonymous complaint, but maybe we have.
I think technically they're generally supposed to be anonymous.
So how does it work currently? Say someone doesn't have any sort of permitted detached living space, but they have some kind of unit back there. Something sitting there. And the neighbor complains, what action can the city take? I mean, you can't, can we send the inspector in there?
Yes. Then, then there's a process. So, um, there are, there are different processes, I think, depending on the nature of the violation. Um, you know, something that is a health and safety issue. I think there's different steps um, in terms of just a standard, um, violation. Uh, normally the building inspector would ask for access, um, as the first step. Um, we have had, we had the the church built on, on West Haven. That, that one's been an issue where we've dealt with this a little bit. Um, it's not necessarily that the building official was refused entry, but just not getting response. And so so there are steps that can be taken. Um, and if refused, you know, you can eventually get a court order if you have to. So there are, there are steps necessarily achieved, but it's not necessarily easy. And enforcement is difficult and expensive and time to. If, if you don't, you know, hopefully you get compliance right away. You just write a letter and say, hey, you know? Um, so there's a, the courtesy letter goes out first and then the notice in order to obey. Um, that's usually when, once we know there's a. Yeah, normally it's, it's amicable, um, but it gets difficult if, if someone's not.
So the idea here would be extremely bad. Process.
Yeah. So that basically they're agreeing ahead of time. Um, so that they really, I mean, they still could refuse, I suppose, but it would be easier probably for the city to get a court order or whatever you need if they've got this condition on, on. I think probably most people, if they knew they had agreed to that.
Yeah. Other like the next owner.
I think too, that, um, there's some, at least in my mind, there's some merit to, uh, changing the twenty four hours to twenty four hour notice to something a little bit more flexible to forty eight or so. I mean, but the point there being is that how often can we do something within the twenty four hour period that's, you know, lives, lives, people's lives get busy and they may not even be in town. Certainly someone who was using this as a second home or whatever may need more time to address this. So I just thought the twenty four hour notice was maybe a little too.
Where's the law down at? Are you lying?
I feel like the twenty four hour notice is like almost kind of like intimidating to the where like
Almost like catch the city.
Could be here that tomorrow, you know?
That's what I mean. Yeah. It, it's, I, I don't think we have to do that.
You were part of this with Ritten or two. Was it, is that more kind of to keep me from being able to pull the curtains over the situation and hide it from discovery? Is that where that originated? Do you remember or? That's the only I can think of why there would be such a tight cover up. I don't know. Take down the walls.
There, there was a, there was a great deal of, um, emotion regarding, you know, this the way this was developed and Trevor helped me out. I'm stepping into too much, but, um, at the time we were, we were dealing with multiple, um, complaints and on multiple properties. And we, we just said, hey, enough is enough. We really need to clamp down. So and I, and it, and certainly you know, gets your attention. If you have a twenty four hour period, you're, you're, you know, but I, I just don't know that, uh, it has to be quite that stringent, as I've said earlier. Um, a lot of it had to do with the fact that if we gave them any longer period of time, that we were afraid they would try to move things around.
Right.
And, uh, and then as soon as the inspector comes in, uh, looks okay. And then immediately things revert back to where they were before. So that was, I think primarily, again, Trevor helped me if I'm not saying this correctly, but primarily that was the reason. Because it was happening. So, um,
This timing wise, about the same time as the S T R ordinance. It's kind of around that same, I mean, a little after, but.
It was actually a little bit before.
It was before, but they got, you know, inclined to.
Yeah, very much so.
Yeah. I mean, the, the primary one that I mean, that went on for a while.
You changed the definitions a little bit in the kitchen? Or is that?
Well, we don't have, the, our zoning ordinance doesn't have a definition of the kitchen.
Cause this looks good.
Yeah. Take for context, um, because we, we discuss them and adopt them at the same time.
And I listened to the previous meetings and, and I mean, I, I understand what he was trying to do and everything, but with A D U's, I mean, following the rules, it's pretty easy. He could have had something then that, that somebody else could use in the future as, as such, and it would be clearer, basically, we just said, just follow the rules of an A D U. You know, instead of a regular. you know, instead of a regular.
Well, except that he would have had to upgrade his septic system.
Yeah, if someone just wants a bonus room.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad I missed that.
I mean, another one of our concerns from that evening was just the unenforceability of so much of these things. And I'm not sure that periodic inspections of the 24 hours notice is being answered, but I think that there ought to be some mechanism by which, you know, it can be ensured that a permitted project is being used as prescribed. I don't know that it needs to be or should be reviewed exclusively by complaints from neighbors. Thinking about that specific project, like, yeah, if the bathroom ended up being five by seven instead of five by five, and it was plumbed for a shower and bathtub, that would necessarily ruffle the neighborhood standards, and yet it would go against the stated purpose of that project. So I guess the challenge, not that anybody needs to agree with this, is that it's, we do want to maintain enforceability.
And it's not, you know, it's not the shower, it's if it was ringed separately. So it's really the use, and, and the intent of not allowing the shower is to prevent the use. I mean, and that's where, you know, what you're getting at is, so then we just require the septic upgrades, and then if they convert it, so what? But I mean, that's not, that's not really necessarily the good answer either. Because, you know, then there's other issues with ADUs too. I mean, it could be, you could do something more performance based in terms of water use.
That occurred to me, water use, sir, you have to pump the septic more frequently, but then that's so arbitrary.
Yeah.
Water use, if you're conserving a lot of, something changes in your household, you have a child, somebody else lives into your existing bed, you know?
You know, I mean,
you know, it's, it's striking the balances between this enforceability component, which is absolutely necessary, right? But also the assumption that people are going to do right by what they're doing, and that's, never thought I'd say the benefit of a complaint-driven system, and it's a legitimate concern, maybe a concern of a complaint. Then we're assuming the best of people and only intervening or having questions when there's concern that there's something not being done in accordance with what was approved, and that, you know, is, feels better than, you know, I mean, I don't, where I work, you can't sell your home without having a pre-sale inspection by the city, and they find all sorts of unperformed stuff. And that's, I mean, it's a huge roadblock, and I'm not advocating that here, it's just like, you know, that's, that's one extreme briefly, I guess, as a thought, I'm like, no, no, you know, I don't think that's necessary.
Well, but you could, you could take that to, you could take that approach, but limited to detached living spaces, if you wanted to go down that route. In other words, you know, as long as you don't have any living space other than your single-family dwelling, no inspection. But if you have a detached living space, then perhaps you would be subject to an inspection.
Good, at the property transfer, because a lot of times when, and it would be certainly a way to ensure that the new owner knows. I have a new one on Ocean that they, they submitted their OWTS permit, and it's like, oh, we got three bedrooms and two units. They just bought it.
Because that's something we've talked about a struggle before, how does the next owner know the?
I mean, it is required to be disclosed legally, so. I said, no, it's like
Anything else? The commissioner, you want to open up a public comment briefly, and then bring it back to us? That's fine. All right, we'll open up a public comment now, see that. Jerry has joined us. Item four, if there's any comments down there. Pause here, oh, there you go.
No, no, good evening, I just wanted to check in. I know it's hard decision-making, but it is important to figure out how to get this right, because it sounds like there's opportunity for people to, you know, housing is such a hard thing, and we balance housing needs with, you know, the decisions we make in planning, but no, I'm just listening in tonight, thank you.
Thank you. So what I've heard is kind of slow, as maybe some direction for Trevor is the idea maybe of a hearing of some sorts, if there is a complaint, some, some kind of that concept, and I think the city manager, if necessary, I think zoning administrator and the building inspector, I think are two really good people to party for that first. We're just kind of talking, Trevor's talked about so far, the concept of a hearing, maybe with a consensus on that weekend, there's some direction for Trevor, or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, meeting with the managers. Reasonable, I think. I mean, I like, I like, personally, I like the complaint-driven system. I mean, because, I mean, on the one hand, it's like if somebody is using their space inappropriately, if I like, literally, either no one notices, then there's really not too much cause for concern, in my opinion, I guess. I know that it's like against the to the space, but, you know, but it's, but I think that, that like, the neighbor files a complaint, we take those seriously, and that seems to, I mean, while it may be frustrating at times, it seems to have worked, at least in his, in the history of people making complaints about legal ADUs and things. I mean, I think, I guess I'm not a fan of like, or like, I guess greater policing by the city or something like that, I just said that. I guess I like the idea of the the homeowner sort of being able to work with what they got and not feeling like cities making the pounce or something like that. And I know it gets tricky, but there should change. You know?
I guess. Now, someone could have a tenant violently living, I mean, in one sense, yeah, well, performance-based makes sense, because what we're worried is what's coming out in terms of traffic. But then, you know, like Tom was saying, they might, they might do a commercial kitchen, they go home, home kitchen. The water use would go up. But their water use should still stay within the design of the septic system.
Or plant a big garden, is there any?
True. I'm just thinking, so the one thing I think the city should kind of keep an eye on, and is keeping an eye on a little bit with the OWTS permits is the lights. And so if someone's water use all of a sudden went up, and enter, is above the design for the septic system, I think that'd be cause for concern even if it wasn't a complaint to the neighbor. But that's maybe probably the one situation I would be.
So to clarify, what you're suggesting there is the ability without a complaint to, for the city to?
I mean, that's really the only evidence I think the city would ever be aware of without a neighbor.
I guess technically the city could be the complainant then.
That's true, I guess the city can be.
Yeah, I mean, if, if one of the public works.
Staff could walk by and see some moving truck.
But, you know, if, if public workers walked by a property and saw that there was an illegal power line or something like that, I mean, that would trigger then, I think, the city to, you know, file a complaint, if you will.
Yeah. I think it would take quite a bit for the city to do that.
Specific to condition four, we talked about the 24 hours, where are we on that? Consider changing that. And then we like the the ability to catch somebody, I guess, if, with a concern or move. If we remove that 24 hours and make it longer, then there is the ability to move the plants around and put up curtains and you know, which would be very frustrating to somebody that had raised a concern or complaint. I mean, it has to have a 24 hours, just means that, you know, you know, keep in mind, we have a building inspector that's here one day a week. Right. So we're, unless we tell them on Wednesday, they're going to get some decent notice anyway.
I'm fine with leaving it that way, I guess we, you know, have some real need to change it, but yeah.
There could be health and safety implications, right, where sooner is better.
Yeah.
Part of the revenue city. Well, that's a, just, okay, so just make sure it's clear in my mind, if there is a health and safety, all bets are off in terms of they can go in right away. The only thing I think the 24 hours references is the periodic inspection. Right, I mean, if
I think you might be right, there's like so heat, no hot water, the basics.
And if there's a septic issue, I think that you go in right away, right? There's no time limit.
Yeah, no, I don't think you'd have to give 24 hour notice. I mean, I think you'd still have to knock on the door and ask for your access.
Are you able to reach out to our new inspector and just see if he knows
Sure.
those things, and if not, we all come together, like, that's a good question. Because he's missing from this conversation too, I realize that position is.
Yeah.
And then I didn't know if four would feel any better if there were language added, not to exceed an amount per calendar year without approval of some entity.
Yeah, that may be a good way to work it.
Be it one, be it two, I don't know what would be reasonable, that way. Have we ever had the nuisance complaint issue in the town that those of you that have been around longer know of, where they all have been kind of rounded and founded complaints? The most part, taking out issues of perception, which is probably wrong, right?
I would say when it came down to the second units and STRs, there were some like malicious complaints, but, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, so just a thought, just put it, not to exceed without approval.
I mean, not to exceed twice a year.
Which, I mean, reasonable to me.
Yeah, I said annually, whatever, yeah, yeah, it's a year.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean.
What about annually without, not to exceed an annual inspection, once per calendar year, right? Without approval of that body we're talking about forming, you know, you and the city manager.
Yeah.
Some vetting, I'm less concerned.
I don't know, is it reasonable or without, without a recommendation from?
Yeah.
Without a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you say you wanted to do it once a year, that's going to tie up the building inspector for a good number of hours.
Well, I'm not proposing mandated inspections annually, I'm saying I can't call and say, look at Richard's house more than once a year.
Oh, I see, okay.
There being some kind of like, is there something different?
Got it, okay, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not creating work for the building inspector. Maybe some language, Trevor, that, you know, unless it's for a different issue or something, if it's a different issue, then if it's the same issue again, we really need to have a conversation before we're going to go off on some story, maybe, or a recommendation.
Well, but it's, it really tied to the de-cash, this would tie into the de-cash living space, so, I mean, maybe, may, but, because you wouldn't want somebody to say, okay, well, they've got a stove in there, and then, then the next time they just say, oh, well, now they have a tenant there, so I would consider that the same issue, that's me.
Because currently, the only mandated inspections I know of are the STR annual licensing inspection. There's none for business licenses, for rental properties, commercial, none of those things, right, okay.
Yeah, I think that's good, annually with final recommendation of, say.
Who should that be?
I'd suggest that you, the inspector, the city manager.
All three?
I, I think, I think it's important, because I think you all three would have a different piece of information perspective to bring to something like this, this is my opinion.
That's, I think that's reasonable, unless you think that's like overkill, you're actually
And I might send a agreement from all three, it's fine. Yeah, it's all different perspectives, and the manager is kind of the all and all, and gets the, any.
Well, clearly, the city manager needs to know what's going on.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Let's take pictures, at least the city representative.
Okay, so no more than once per calendar year without agreement from building inspectors and administrator. Now, calendar year, so what if if someone made a complaint on, so that's in Jan, you know, September 31st, January 1st, or, you know, so it could be less than a year, but it could also be two years.
Do you have something like a full length?
Not more than
I feel like it's a secret year.
Twice in 12 months, maybe just twice in 12 months.
Like the word reasonable. Reasonable. I know, but if it's not reasonable, then you can, you can be the judge. You can say that's not reasonable, or that is reasonable, yeah, let's go do it. Rolling 12, would that work?
Oh, sorry, once in 12 months.
Been such a huge, come up, I already about deterring deterring this type of behavior, right? And I just want to make sure that's, I mean, it seems to me like I haven't four here, and Richard, you could speak to this. It really is, it serves as a deterrent, right? I mean, yes, it can serve as a mechanism for policing, but really it also exists as a deterrent. I just want to make sure that if it's getting replaced, that that language is as much of, or more of a deterrent. Sort of independent of the actual capacity for policing these things, can you achieve this? At least the perception of an idiot constitutes.
So I mean, I think, because we're talking about, okay, it's still with 24 hour notice, so owner to agree to periodic inspections walk through by the city building inspector with 24 hour notice, but no more than once in any 12 month period without agreement from building inspectors and administrators. So it'd be next week if all three agree that something is going on.
Yeah, I think when that came up, with these, you know, I brought it up. I, I found that condition be like a little bit intimidating, which maybe that's the point, but I don't, you know, so, I guess it's intimidating enough to keep you from using your space inappropriately, but I guess I didn't really like being too coming across as
Yeah, well, I think it also, you know, the way it's worded, it sounds like Yeah, well, I, I think it also, you know, the way it's worded, it sounds like, oh, so they're just going to automatically come periodically. But that's not the intent. It tends to skip it. When I add that, um, you know, but again, the city is not going to spend all time. So I don't think there's much danger in that, but I, maybe it's
And I feel like we're keeping the, the teeth, so to speak, the deterrent value, but we're kind of defining reasonable a little bit here. We're kind of putting a little bit of, you know, bumper rails on it. Because it was pretty vague there and it was the concern that got attention of everyone. All right, enough to, were you trying to get guys?
I think so. Um, would you like to see it again next month for final action?
Yeah. Do you want to explore? I mean, there was some nodding when it was mentioned, um, sections of that sort of a property that contains detached living space?
It's a great idea. I just don't think that, uh, it can be done here. I think we probably have to do some more. I don't even know how to do that. I don't know if that would become a policy or if that would be. Uh, let's
So are you thinking about it broader than just detached living spaces?
Well, we started off looking at just detached living. Well, I guess we did because you were saying that in some cities, they just do a walkthrough inspection prior to any sale. And then we kind of narrowed it down to just attached living spaces, but I don't know if that's really I don't know how to do that.
I guess if it's just for detached living spaces, then you would make it a condition of approval. And if they accept that, then you could do it that way. So you could do that as part of this process for approving detached living spaces.
Okay.
If you want to do it more broadly, then we probably need it in a moment.
This is making another job for somebody else. And if it's a rule on the website, on the new website, maybe it's like, this is the way it is. And refer to our rules. This is the Trinidad rule.
And we will be, we are going to be updating the zoning ordinance. So we can, we can kind of
Because I
Larger issue.
I'd say the larger issue, I feel like we, we invest a lot of time and comments on our, our lack of opportunity to educate, enforce whatever mechanism. And this could be a way to do that, but I, I think it would solve more issues, in particular with more global perspectives, and maybe we get to the zoning ordinance, maybe at least consider it.
Yeah, you know, and I think, um, you know, there's some education outreach to realtors. Um, certainly most properties in Trinidad go through just a few realtors' hands, but there are some other random ones that come up that might not, you know, they might not know about the OWT, because we already have that as a requirement that they have to disclose the OWTS. That's a new ordinance. Um, when we first started that program, we did send information to the realtors. Um, we haven't done that in a while. But yeah, I mean, like you said, it's kind of a deterrent. It's education. I think, you know, a lot of people don't know. It's on these things here. Especially if you're not doing construction, if you're just moving stuff around and using
Yeah, I mean, going down that road would generate a lot of work for the city. Also, like, they'd have to manage all these, you know, watch out for properties that are for sale and like, you know, properties are only listed on the market for whatever, a couple of days and then just appear. And I, I guess the other concern there, well, maybe it's not, it, I guess just from a cost standpoint, it's like, okay, do this inspection of someone's house and then it like turns out they got an illegal ADU or fourth benefit or whatever. And then it just like opens this can of worms that I guess sort of it gets saddled onto the, for the homeowner, like the cost of dealing with all that. But but like there's a, there's a huge amount of work that would have just like come out of nowhere. Someone unexpected for the city.
Yeah, I'll just step in for a second and just look at the agenda. I think we're drifting pretty far from our topic. Um, so I'd suggest that we can come back to this, um, for some discussion, even just put it on as a discussion item. Uh, if, if, if we want to, but I think for tonight, we're drifting kind of far from detached living spaces now. I'm definitely guilty of that as well.
Thanks.
Good point. Um, I'll just end it to say that we do, we do do that to, to some degree. And we always have with the OWTS. So we don't catch them all. Um, but and we have had to deal with some issues that came up. And just the OWTS permit itself kind of discloses some of that information. We do have that a little bit embedded.
All right, then moving on to agenda item five.
So this was the item that I gave you the wrong regulations. I think, I think what happened is, uh, normally I have my files in order of last modified and it did, it came up as alphabetical orders. But anyway, so this is now the current regulations. Um, you know, I think to some degree, they are what they are, um, because for the most part, they just follow the coastal commission regulations. Um, so we don't have a whole lot of flexibility in how these are administered, um, and, and what these regulations look like. Um, you know, the, we could consider separately, so I, I think one of the things is currently our CDP process is always associated with, we don't actually have a separate CDP process, which is, um, doesn't work for everything. Um, but I sort of hoped that we could continue to streamline those permits and have, you know, the same process for design review and CDP and the same sets of findings. Um, and so I wanted to, I wanted to have, you know, the exemptions and exclusions and the administrative processes also work for design. So that's where we started from. And, you know, after talking with coastal commission, I saw we have to follow their process. So this is, we could, when we update the LCP, we could have another administrative approval process for design use or other things. Um, this would cover some things. Um, but anyway, so um, but you know, I think there's a little bit of leeway we have to, um, change things around, but you know, like the list of, of projects that are subject to administrative permits, that's apparently pretty set in stone, um, according to the coastal commission. They didn't even want it to be stricter. Normally it can be stricter. Anyway, so this is, as I said, that is what it is. Um, I do have a flow chart in there. It sort of shows what the process is and, um, I think this is, this is the map I've been interested in. Um, so this shows where administrative permits would apply, which is the local jurisdiction. So the pinkish, peachish area. And then just as an aside, we were talking about, we've also been talking about ADUs and the ministerial permits, which is there's no review, no hearing. It's just if you check the boxes, you get your permit. And that's what the state requires. So that's the detached area. We're talking about ADUs again. So, and I think, um, these administrative, uh, permit regulations are necessary for the ADU ordinance. I just sent, um, another version of that to the coastal commission. We've got most things worked out. They're going to send a copy to HCD. So HCD does have to approve um, ordinance as well. So we'll probably get some comments back from them. But the next time you see the ADU to ordinance, I will incorporate these into that. I need to take on these questions.
I had one question at the very end. Um, paragraph K on page four of the procedures, which is expiration. Um, the last sentence says, if expired, another coastal development permit application shall be required. Um, I guess for clarification, could you say whether or not that would be an administrative CDP or a formal CDP?
It could be an administrative CDP again.
So you just start the process over again, no penalty per se. Okay.
So we will note, there are a few things like that, um, the findings, for example, that's a big one. Um, some of the noticing, the noticing. These are things that when we do our big update, they're not going to be specific to administrative permits, but we don't they should already be requirements for CDPs, standard CDPs, but because we don't have a process for just CDPs, we don't have these findings, we don't have these um, we don't have the, our notification requirements aren't currently in compliance. Um, you know, we don't have anything about expiration. And so, so some of these are going to get wrapped into the normal CDP process for now, because we don't
In paragraph K, just a question, why three years for this particular type of CDP versus two, which I feel like we see more often, the two year? I don't know if there's an advantage to keeping things consistent or?
Um, I'm sure, you know, that language I think is probably flexible. I don't think that specifically language is in the coastal act regulations. Probably from whatever ordinance it took this from. So yeah, I think two years is probably more standard. And, and actually I've got to do a year. Um, and for bigger projects, two years. So like, I mean, an administrative permit should be a small project. A year.
And a question, it's, I feel like it's clear in the flow chart, which I love, by the way. I think the more we can do those, the easier it is for everybody to understand. Um, but as far as the process, right? So you would administer, you would issue an administrative CDP, right? Technically, it's a tentative until it comes before us as either a consent item, we pull it out, and then it's in a appeal period.
That's correct. And
So
Yes.
With that, I think there might be an opportunity in section G on page three somewhere to maybe clarify that in the verbiage for someone reading through it that it, it doesn't, I, I don't know, it's maybe it's just me, it doesn't feel like it's clear enough in the text of this that it's a tentative permit until at least it comes before us. There's still that one more check. And that's important to me, just so that members of the community don't feel that there's no oversight on this. I want to make sure it's very clear that yes, there is, there's an opportunity, it will be agendized, it will come before us as a consent item and then we can, you know, where the right place to put that clarification is. Thank you for teaching me, uh, the minutes. Lacking to be against her, I mean, I, I got it from the context of my quiz, actually.
It actually comes up in a number of
I bet. Anything else? Anybody have questions or comments or concerns about before we open to public comment?
I think maybe I can add the language, um, to clarify, maybe.
Okay. It sounded like they're all conditionally approved, right? Pause here and we'll open this one to public comment. If there's anybody online. It's land, now's your chance. I'm seeing anybody running to click on you to raise their hand, so to bring it back to us. If you please speak up. All right, back to the commission.
So I just sort of, so it's, it's clear in my mind, Trevor, um, that right now, the, um, these, uh, hot procedures, not policy procedures, are seventeen dot seven two dot oh seven six, which would that, that's going to go into the ordinance.
Yes, so chapter, uh, seventy two is, um, has all the CDP use permit variants. So it has all the hearing, notice requirements, appeals, things like that.
And then the numbers in parentheses remind me again what they are.
Oh. Um, so those, that's the certified zoning ordinance. So I think I've mentioned this.
Yeah, okay. I just want to clarify that that's
So the seventeen seven two is the codified zoning ordinance and the seven point twelve is the certified zoning. So we're working on reconciling those two. Be more complicated than we thought it was going to be. And so those will work. But that's what we, you know, for our STR ordinance, um, and we've been doing that for a while. I was just getting
I just want to clarify where this winds up. Thank you.
Anything else, anybody? I did want to come back to the minutes. We now have the proper quorum to, the three people that were present at that, uh, August meeting, am I remembering right? So slay myself with the three present regarding sixteen meeting. Changes to those minutes.
A bit very small, page seven oh seven, the minutes at the top of the page. And a sentence started like, I mean, a status report, I believe, just to clarify, requested a status report in the general plan. I think that's a few minutes there.
Yes, yeah.
Good.
I don't think it's inaccurate as written, but, um, if you want to, it's, it's again, that if parking is sensible, uh, which is a serious to be, that's, um, really emphasize we're, we're okay, uh, with the trade off, parking and public safety, right? That's improving waterability and improving the whatever, I don't know.
Okay.
And, and there's somewhere, as we discussed, the parking, right? This is something I mentioned, I feel like it should be associated somewhere, that parking is indeed plentiful. And necessary, we can use that resource to ensure public safety. Exactly where in the course of the meeting that came up, I don't even recall.
Is that, uh, on page three of seven towards the bottom? I made a comment to be effective that there's putting some note in there that there are areas of concentrated use of parking. Is that kind of what you're getting at to help manage the perception that overall the survey says there's not a, is that what you're?
I mean, that was one of the major findings, right? But, but I mean, maybe it was more
In the red curve this session?
Most part.
Because then you were talking about, maybe we need to add red curve in some places.
Yeah, I guess we should have reviewed, um, the reporting for it. Yeah, I guess you should have reviewed the reporting of the meeting prior. If anything wrong, one of the findings of the report is that there is this perception of any parking problem, but there's not a parking problem.
Yes. Say that.
And so if it's necessary to tap into parking availability, projects, that's green safety or walkability in town, then I think it would be mindful of the fact that there is plenty of parking.
And there are places to add park.
Sort of something you'd like to.
I think it's inaccurate as written, but I do want to ensure that that idea is similar.
Let's see, we have a recording record.
I guess the question is, would you like me to add that to these minutes? Or if it's recorded in these minutes tonight, is that good enough?
Oh gosh. Yeah, I was going to say, there was sort of a discussion. I think, I think maybe it's, for a better, but.
Yeah, just to that. I think it'd be more important to be standalone and actually minutes from meeting than tonight's.
Okay.
And I might have just heard, we were talking about the prioritization strategies, right? That there is a discussion.
Why don't I add it there on page four?
At page seven?
Yeah, cause they're not related, I think that's.
There's a lot of parking hotspots where there are concentrated efforts of, or locations where there aren't parking. Overall, there is not too far away parking.
Speed bumps going in, everybody going into that parking area in the car. That's an editorial.
So yeah, the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph down talks about prioritizing strategies. And maybe if I added it.
And I, go ahead, but one of those priorities was something related to.
Walkability, yeah.
If necessary to support those strategies, in case there are parking resources in excess.
Let's use again as a greatest hit next month, right?
Well, I mean, if you really want to suit the language, or if you're okay with me just adding something that, that, you know, Slay pointed out that if parking is plentiful, then there are parking spaces available for other strategies like walkability.
Okay, then I motion to approve the minutes with that change, Trevor's going to put in.
Move to approve as amended.
And I will submit. Hi. All right, three oh. All right, so the minutes are done. Moving to these commissioner reports.
The fact, it's going to be, the fact is about to meet next week, we have our. We'll also say that there is coming out graph of what Trevor sent us, or showed us last meeting of the media, kind of usage thing that is going to be coming, it's, the city's picking that up and going with that. Product manager, so that's.
Oh yeah, the little.
Those postcards that he gave us that graph last time, so that's, we're going to see more of that.
Yeah, I guess the rest of the commission didn't see it, but I, I created little postcards and you can actually just use an Excel file, insert the name, the water use. So you can sort of do a template and then you can use mail merge to just insert that for every water.
Committee reports, Tim.
Trevor, committee next month.
SDR committee is also.
It's not necessarily a meeting, but RCEA is doing a survey of all of the county for disaster resiliency, particularly focused on power issues. But it's kind of broad, it's branched out and it's a little bit more than that. How you're bringing it up is because I'm on the CAC board for RCEA. And one of the things that was really missing is that there was very little input from Trinidad, not, not because of anybody didn't do it, but people were just not familiar with what our resiliency capabilities were up here. So I've been trying to add to their survey, some of the disaster-related resiliency things like town hall with the, you know, batteries, et cetera. And just remind people that, that the school, rancheria, or areas where people can congregate as well as town hall. So they're working on that. Hopefully it'll be a little bit better than what, how we came up. But they still had us as a police department, too.
And you have the local hazard mitigation plan.
Do I have it?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I think some of it, some of that isn't talked about.
Yeah, you know, there's so much overlap right now with what everybody's doing that it's almost hard to keep track of who's doing what to who. And you get OES involved and you get the, what's the other acronym? COED, right? And then you get CERT and RCEA's in it, so it goes on and on. But yeah. If there's anything wrong with that. Not at all.
And then I, I did have one other thing, just a plug for the CERT committee, the Community Emergency Response Team that the city has decided to form for the Greater Trinidad, West Haven, and hopefully a little bit bigger. Really encourage people to look into it. I believe the meeting is on the twenty-fifth here in Town Hall. And then November, there's training over the course of the weekend. It starts Friday and goes Saturday, Sunday. It's a great way for us to support ourselves. And one thing we learned this winter, the earthquake, we are going to be on our own. So it's a great.
Reapplied for my ham license, so I can be a radio operator.
Thank you. All right, staff report, Trevor.
Um, let's see, I am, I'm still wrapping up a couple of, you know, the final reports and deliverables for SB two and leave. And then thinking about what my next steps are. One will be the cultural resources element of the general plan. I was reminded that Aaron asked for an update on where all the various elements are. And then I think, I think the resiliency planning is, the coastal resiliency planning is far enough along that I can start on some of my tasks. And we just revised the LCP grant timeline and sort of put things back. I guess we're already so being on that. Picking up the CDP element in June.
Is that, you'll pass twenty twenty-five now, the new timeline for that one?
It goes through twenty-two. Yeah, and I think, yeah, and I'm still going to be continuing to process some of those SB two and leaves. So there's going to be a reasonable accommodation ordinance and the other ordinance that were passed. You just have to get the certification worked out, which I'll have ready. That's almost October meeting. And we're still working on ADU ordinance in the background. As you have, I'm focused on LCP grant tasks and some re. It's going to be revamping the application forms and creating, like, quick Q and A questions. Website permitting. See, Aaron, you've got the website up. I will say, there's a lot of great things about the new website, but I also, I can't find them.
Okay.
So, and I think a lot of it is not tagged right, and not, not all of it has been brought in. So I think, and, you know, the, the city really wanted to get it live, and so it got live, and then it's like, okay, great. Now we're done. And no, 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 there's, we have to keep working.
Hard work.
So if, if you guys, if you keep notes, when you go on the website, I can't find things, because I'm going to be, and, you know, it's, I'm going to be, Cheryl is kind of lead heading that, and so I'm going to be bugging Cheryl to get, get some stuff. I have some coastal resiliency planning and stuff up there, and the water reports aren't there. So, um, so yeah, so that's a work in progress, and I think input needed.
Okay, future agenda items, I know we had one added, the, coming back to the after the fact permit. Definitely. And then I had a thought for a request, I guess. What if in parentheses, after we put the month and the year that these things got added to it? Just to kind of remind us how long. I do. Cause I mean, this is just a parking lot of things we might get to talk about at some point down the road.
Yeah.
And, and just personally, I mean, I, I recognize there's a tremendous bounce of our time and more importantly, staff's time with obligations that we have already and, and irons that we have in a fire. I want to make sure we're not missing opportunities to be proactive on things that have been brought to our attention and things we want to work on at the expense of these other commitments. So I don't, I don't know how to balance that, but it's quite a frustration, but a, just a thought that we're so busy with what we've already got that we can't tackle it. We're never going to make progress if we don't figure out some way to chew a little, little bites away at this list as well. Otherwise, it's just going to continue to grow and become ugly.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think, I mean, in a sense, I'm not sure rainwater catchment needs to come back to the planning commission necessarily. Unless you want to expand on sort of those, the idea of the proof, proof plans, which GHD is working on with the demonstration project of the school. The TMP incorporation into the general plan I have done in the background. And so that's, some of that's in the, well, it was in the cultural resources element. I ended up, I ended up taking the section on the tri-state area out at the recommendation of the city attorney right now, because there's ongoing litigation. Anyway, I am working on that. Vegetation and science are digital hands of worms, but we'll, we'll get to those definitely when we do our big update.
I'd like to add another can of worms.
Oh boy.
I think, at least from my mind, it would be very useful to at least have some sort of primer on annexation. You know, that could be just as simple as maybe a, a briefing. But I'd really like to understand it in the context of every time we talk about, we have to annex certain areas, but then I don't know enough about the process, the procedures, what's all required.
That's a great question, and it's actually the other re-grant task is to do a preliminary, it's like a preliminary services. I forget what they call it, the LACO, that you do to start the annexation process. It's like assessment of your ability to provide services. And I'm going to be doing some outreach to Area A, so that's the link.
What is our joint meeting generally? With us in the council and the STR committee? Coming up, right?
December.
Summer, right? The only reason, on that same thought, I can't remember what meeting was in the last few months. At the council, Steve Ladwig brought up the concept and said that that's something that needs to be thought about. So I don't know if the timing.
Okay.
Did you have at least a very high level presentation of that meeting? I don't know, just a thought. That's not too far off, but.
Annexation for dummies.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, there's always been a lot of resistance from outside the city to annexation, but I have no idea.
Well, and that, that's the other reason, I think it would be useful maybe to have some sort of dialogue and maybe get a feel for how much resistance there is.
Thanks.
Glad to have.
Anything else for future agendas? That we are joined, thanks.
Thank you. Feel free, Trevor.
I didn't chase it.
No, you did.